Well, we have one small piece of board business that will get out of the way quickly, which are our next two meeting dates. We have a continuation, oh no, another hearing in September, which is a bit unusual for us, September 22nd, to deal with some appeals on 488 Jerusalem Road. They appear to be meaty, so we've scheduled a separate meeting for that on September 22nd, and then our regular meeting where continued hearings, et cetera, will be dealt with on October 6th. Do any board members have problems attending virtually either of these two meetings?
I'm gonna check on that.
Okay, anybody else besides Peter who's checking his process?
Good work for me.
Okay, I'm okay. I've got it down. I don't seem to be going too many places these days. I get all the way downtown and back, which is about a five-second walk.
The 22nd, I believe I can be back at my computer in time for a four, it would be a regular 7:30, 4:30 for me. I will be driving from Boise to Bend, and I should be able to do that.
Okay, despite the time difference.
Despite the time difference. Oh, wait a minute, Boise to Bend, yeah, that's five hours. I can get back. I'll make it a point to get back.
Okay, because we don't have any material in these really yet, so, you know, none of this has been heard. My guess it'll be fairly important. So, why don't we consider, Jen, that everybody's on board for the 22nd as well as the 6th of October, and if there are conflicts or...
Sounds great. And the 22nd, I have everything scanned and ready to send out, so I'll do that by the end of this week, so there's plenty of time to review them. They're repetitive, but there's three large packets, so I'll get that out to the board.
My goodness. I was joking with Jen a little bit earlier that our life as zoning board members has been quiescent for the last half year, and all of a sudden, we're getting, I shouldn't have said anything, because we're paying the price with a lot of interesting issues. Anyway, I will, for the sake of the audience, explain that we have three continued hearings that we will deal with tonight. They're essentially continued for new information and material. Once we hear that, we will, and obviously we'll turn it over to people who might wish to comment on the material, but those tend to be relatively short. We will have our new hearing, and then we will go back and deal with some of the deliberations concerning these hearings. So, hearing X will come up twice at least tonight, once to see if there's any new material and have us ask questions if there is, and secondly, to talk and synthesize what we've heard to date. So, the first hearing, a continued hearing, is a special permit filed by Merrill Engineers on behalf of their clients, the Tedeskis, to construct a residential dock at 75 Border Street. Does anybody, oh!
I upgraded, I promoted Joshua Green for Merrill to address it.
Terrific. Joshua, do you have anything new or modified?
No, I don't have anything new. We didn't receive any comments last time, and I haven't heard of anything since. I believe it was just a draft decision or the order of conditions wanted to be obtained. So, this time, I don't have anything further. I can answer any questions if you have them now.
Okay. Let me turn it over to the board. Do you have questions of Joshua?
None.
No, like you noted, we did receive the order of conditions, which I think was really the only lingering...
Outstanding, yeah. Please. Okay, Jen, are there people here who would like to speak to the materiality of any submissions?
I don't have anything in the Q and A. I did circulate today the NOI to the board, the order of conditions, which was sent out earlier today. I sent it actually to Matt, who's drafting the opinion, and we had said we already knew it was approved at the last meeting, but I did send it to Matt so he could have it noted in the decision.
Okay.
And I don't see any hands raised, so I think we are good to move forward.
Well, I would move that we close that hearing, then.
I'll second it.
Okay, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We need a roll call, please.
Jen, a roll call. All right, okay, let's start with Lee.
Aye.
With your name.
Lee Daris.
Aye. Woody Chitikai. Somebody else, aye?
Peter Gertikai, aye.
All right, three.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Four.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Five. Charlie, you want to unmute and...
Muted, Charlie.
Can you unmute, Charlie? You're on mute. Not yet.
There you go.
There you go. Charlie?
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Great, okay, six zip.
Thank you.
All right, the second is, the second continued hearing is an appeal filed by Cavanaro Consulting regarding a special building permit for a single-family home to be constructed at 35 Oak Street. So, that, we have received new information on this one. Jen, do you have a listing of what came in? I can, you know, recollect, I've got my file here, but I think...
For 35 Oak?
Yeah, 35 Oak.
So, we received a packet from Attorney Sullivan that's dated September 2nd, which is 2020. If we could promote Attorney Sullivan, that would be great. If town council could, and I'm gonna promote, this must be Cindy.
Yeah, Cindy's on the job tonight.
Yes. So, we received that, and then the chairman, Chitik, asked for updated plans, which we sent out, which was the Norfolk Plan, and then trying to think if there's anything else.
Well, what we received in the interim, I think, was a listing of the people who, you know, had takings, if you will, by order of the town select board, and we also got, I think, today or maybe yesterday, I don't remember, the, basically a map of Oak Street that accompanied that list of takings, just for people to take a look at the physical layout there. So, that's where we are. And Attorney Sullivan, since you're the person who's filed to appeal the building inspector's denial to issue a building permit, maybe you would like to start this off and maybe recap what came in anew in your brief, as well as anything else salient.
Great, thank you very much. Again, it's Walter Sullivan, the attorney for Anne Marie and Michael Baker.
Could you speak up a little, Walter?
Is that better?
You're kind of faint.
Better?
Yes.
I apologize. So, it's Walter Sullivan, I represent the Bakers who own 35 Oak Street, as the board knows. We were here before you back in August, and it's their position that the Bakers have a second buildable lot, which is known as Lot 99. They based that on the principles of the Darlec Fee Statute, and a decision this board came down with several years ago, Rosenbach. So, board asked me to submit some additional information, which I did in September 2nd, and that included the deed into my clients, the 1901 plan, which delineated lots 99 and 100, some case decisions. I also submitted, Mr. Chair, a plan from John Cavanaro, which delineated the abutting properties, which was omitted the last time, and we have the original deed for the property from 1917, and I believe the board also requested that I submit a copy of the taking plan from 1998, which I did earlier this week. That plan clearly shows that the property identified as 35 Oak Street, which at the time was owned by Brennec, had taken from it 2,400 square feet, and that's 1,200 attributed to each lot, because they're 60 feet wide. As the board well knows, Lot 100 contains a single-family home, and Lot 99 is a freestanding lot without anything upon it. I think it's well understood what we're claiming here under the Darlec Fee Statute and under the local bylaw, Section 8.3b, that this lot retained its single-lot exemption, because with the Darlec Fee Statute land, it contains in excess of 9,000 square feet. I recognize that the board asked, you know, why the deed didn't specifically say that it had 9,000 square feet, and it never did, nor would I submit as a matter of title, could it. It identifies this containing 8,017 square feet, because nobody could ever certify that that land was exclusive to my clients. It's subject to others' rights to pass and repass when the way was in fact private. Now, the way, since 1998, became a taking, and it was a public way for which my clients and others on Oak Street received no compensation. And I believe that the principles which the board relied upon in the Rosenbach decision, that it clearly was not the intent of town meeting to deprive people of buildable lots without any type of taking. So, my clients, when they purchased this property earlier in the year, were aware of the Rosenbach decision and concluded that they had a buildable lot. We think the evidence supports that, and we think there's good reason that the town of Cohasset and this honorable board chose to find that precedent, Rosenbach, because unlike other towns where it's 5,000 square feet, here, it's 9,000 square feet, which is not an insignificant sum. And there is certainly, I understand that there's always concern about what other lots might be impacted by this, but I would submit that the Rosenbach decisions, I think it was taken into account when the board made that decision, and my clients, you know, wish to build a single-family home on what is not an insignificant amount of property. So, for all of those reasons, we would ask that this board reverse the building inspector who originally agreed with us based on the Rosenbach decision, but then rescinded that agreement, that decision, and I'd be happy to address any questions from the board or from its town, from its council.
Okay. Who from the board would like to lead off? Dave, you wrote the earlier decision back in 2017. Would you like to lead off questions tonight?
Yeah, you know, I think legally, I think the 2017 decision was, I'm still pretty confident that it was well-founded. I think if we, if the town wished to exclude land that would be included with the Darlec Fee Statute, that it probably should be included in the zoning bylaw itself, and the fact that it's absent leaves the statute, the Darlec Fee Statute is the only operative law that governs that law.
Oops.
After the taking, it's 8,000 square foot lot, but the reasoning that we had in 2017 about the taking without compensation, I think still stands, and it's also logically consistent that all of these other lots are exactly the same. So, it's not putting a house that conforms to the zoning bylaws on that particular lot is completely consistent with the entire neighborhood. So, I'm still, and I was back and forth quite a bit on whether the Rosenbach decision was the right one at the time, and rereading it and rethinking it, I still think it was. So, I follow the same principles in this case.
Okay, how about some others? For or against? Peter?
Are we effectively deliberating or asking questions?
No, asking questions, and, you know, is there more information we need?
I don't have any questions. I'm fully, I'm fully of the opinion that the former decision was the correct one.
Okay. Charlie?
I have your questions.
Matt, questions? Matt's muted, but you could nod your head.
No, I had him muted. I was just looking at my list. No, I don't have any, I mean, from what I did see on the taking plan there of the 20, it's a 2,100 square feet, I mean, just to reconfirm, I mean, there was no form of compensation whatsoever offered to any of those taken properties, even in the form of something minimal by the town at the time.
Walter, you could address that.
I apologize. Yes, there was no compensation offered whatsoever, not only to my clients, but anybody else that was involved.
I also don't think, but I'm not positive, that there was any pushback from people who owned the property in terms of expecting compensation. I think that went through not just the select board, but also the town meeting itself. Is that correct?
I can't really address that. I think that's probably correct, I'm sure...
Probably leading, I mean, I don't know.
I'm sure people wanted it taken for services. That's not to suggest that they understood the reason. No, it was a private way, and it's, you know, people on private ways are often looking for towns to take the property for purposes of services. I'm not sure that they understand necessarily all that's involved.
Okay.
And do we know, like, would there have been a typical fee for those types of services in town, but that fee was not asked for in this case because in exchange for the property?
I honestly don't know. I have read the town meeting vote. There's no indication from my reading of it, and I think this was alluded to in the decision of Rosenbach. There's no indication that the town was intending to take and deprive anybody of anything, but there was no monetary consideration for it.
Are there anybody who would like to speak on matters of evidence submitted in the general Jen, is there anything, anybody with their hand raised?
Yes, we have a few questions, and one comment, which I believe we've heard before. I'm gonna keep my video off, just because it helps with the streaming of the meeting.
Okay.
Just one is a comment from Ann McCusker, and I know that this could be done at the end. Last, at the last meeting, Lee Daris recused herself. She's just wondering why she is not at this time. I'll let Lee answer, but obviously, it could be something, she's turned dark, but wouldn't be voting. Lee, did you want to comment on that question? Sorry, Woody, you should ask that.
Yeah.
Lee is muted.
She may have stepped away. Lee, are you there?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, I am recusing myself. It's just the meeting started too quick, so I muted myself and blacked myself out for this.
Okay.
I, and then, there's a gentleman, his name is Jason Stefani, and he owns 34 Oak Street. I believe he sent us an email before, and thanks to the board's decision a couple of years ago, he now owns the home in Cohasset and is approving this lot. Same exact situation would create the opportunity for two more families to join our community and something you all should feel really good about. And then Mary Brennec looked, see, Ann McCusker wrote, Mary Brennec looked into building on this lot prior. She was told that the lot didn't have the appropriate square footage. This isn't a private way, therefore, they do not own the land in the middle of the street regardless of compensation. So, those are the comments we have.
Any further comments from the board? We're not deliberating, but any further comments about evidence or, you know, factual submissions? And if not, I would make a motion that we close the hearing.
Nope.
No?
You're gonna continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing. I beg your pardon, what am I saying?
Sorry.
Yes, no, 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 it's an appeal, yes.
Wait a minute, do we really want to continue this hearing?
Well, we have 14 days, it's an appeal. I believe we have a 14-day window to file a decision.
You do. If you voted this evening, you have 14 days to file it.
If I may, I extended the time till October 31st, I believe, by letter, Jen.
Okay.
You did, thank you.
Okay, well, then, I feel, Pete, much better about that.
Me too.
So, I would, I would, I'll make the motion again, then, that we close the hearing.
Just one last thing, I'm sorry, Chairman Chitik is a little off today. Did Cindy Amara, did you want to ask council if they had anything to say?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Cindy, sorry.
Hi, I just want to say that I've read all the materials, and I share the opinion that was first laid out by Mr. McMorris about the original decision, and I've seen nothing presented or alluded to that would lead me to say that that decision was in error and should not be followed. I believe that the analysis presented by Attorney Sullivan is consistent with that previous decision, and I think the taking, from what we can tell, and the fact that there was no compensation and no intent to turn people's property from buildable to unbuildable is telling to me.
Okay, great. Any other comments, last chance, or we'll... Now, can I close? Or no, we're gonna continue?
Are you closing it or continuing?
Well, I mean, if Attorney Sullivan's given us till October 31st, we ought to be able to render a decision well before that.
And I would just say there are some more comments, but the board will deliberate regarding the decision and review its thinking and thoughts at the next meeting in October 6th. Correct, that would be the plan, just because there are some more residents who have already asked questions that are asking other questions as to, at the last meeting, it seemed that some members were against the choice of building, and now it seems it's changed. So, I think that you would review at the next meeting, whatever, wherever you land, whether you're for or against, you'll do that in the deliberation on October 6th. Just wanted to say that for the public.
But if we close the hearing, we really can't consider those opinions.
But you're not gonna close, you're gonna continue and then...
Continue, okay. All right. I'd move that we continue the hearing until October 6th.
Second.
All in favor?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Woody Chitikai?
Peter Gertikai.
Okay, five zip. Okay, that's continued. The third hearing is a special permit filed by Adam Brodsky on behalf of his client, Lee Schwartz, to convert an existing barn slash boathouse into a recreation room at 11 Sheldon Road. So, the full board is back, town council is back, and we have Adam Brodsky's here.
Good evening, all.
Adam, so, why don't you take over? There have been a couple of submissions, I think, on your part in particular, in the last month. Maybe you could just very briefly outline what those were and what they meant, at least to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll briefly review where we started. I represent Lee Schwartz, who is the property owner. We're being assisted by Laura Murphy from Red Barn Studio, our designer, and Nino Di Nuno, our contractor. You recall that this property is within the residency district. There's an existing single-family residence and a barn slash boathouse. The boathouse was constructed via special permit issued in 1998. The lot is lawfully non-conforming. The boathouse conforms to all of the dimensional requirements, but the zoning board of appeals required a special permit, because the proposed new structure was going to be located on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Boathouses are an allowed use as an accessory residential building within the C District. The zoning board of appeals conditioned the special permit for the boathouse use to not contain plumbing or be used as a guesthouse. Ms. Schwartz wishes to convert the boathouse use to a recreation room and install a bathroom and a kitchenette. She's not seeking a guesthouse use, but this is a recreation room also, an allowed use within the C residency district. So, we're proposing to convert the allowed boathouse use to another allowed use. It was my belief that this could be done simply with a building permit without the grant of additional zoning relief. However, Mr. Egan, the building commissioner, did not want to issue a building permit without first coming to the board. If you decide ultimately that we do not need relief, we're prepared to withdraw the application, although it may be more prudent for the board to consider issuing a finding on the record to avoid any future misunderstandings. Obviously, if you decide that we need relief, we have submitted a request for a special permit. So, Mr. Chitik, at the last public hearing, the board requested that we identify similar residential accessory structures in the neighborhood, and Ms. Murphy, working together with the assessors' office, identified all of the accessory residential structures within 1,000 feet of the property, and I submitted this letter, this information in a letter to the board on September 2nd. Ms. Murphy identified 10 parcels within 1,000 feet with accessory residential structures, and at least two of those structures have baths. We suspect that more do, but that information was not available from the public records, and we don't have access to those properties. And I concluded that residential accessory structures are at least common in the neighborhood as defined within that 1,000-foot radius. So, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the board may have. This is, again, yet another novel zoning matter, and we're prepared to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, let me turn it over to the board. Who would like to lead off with questions of Attorney Brodsky?
I have one.
Dave.
I know we received a letter in the last couple of days from Attorney Henderson discussing principles of race judicata and issue preclusion, et cetera. What's your position on why the earlier decision is not binding on the property?
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Sure, please.
We're not challenging the special permit for the boathouse use. We're proposing an entirely different use, which is an allowed use. I have a difficult time understanding why the zoning board in 1998 prohibited an allowed use then. It was also an allowed use in connection with a special permit for a boathouse use. But regardless, all we're proposing at the present time is a new allowed use that's allowed as a right under zoning. So, we're not challenging the special permit issued in 1998. I personally also feel that, I don't see how the zoning board could prohibit in perpetuity the conversion of a special permit use to another allowed use. I think that's beyond, beyond the board's powers, but I mean, I don't think we need to go that far in the analysis.
Okay, I guess my, my next question is the next step, is that if, looking at the plans, if you put a bed where the pool table is, it's a guesthouse, and there's an express condition in the special permit for that building that it not be used as a guesthouse. And I'm not sure that calling it a recreation room does provide a vehicle to get around the conditions that were put in the other permit.
Dave, could you repeat that point? You kind of cut our honor.
Sure. If the pool, where the pool table is in the plan, if that were a bed, this would be a guesthouse. The guesthouse was expressly prohibited in the conditions of the original special permit for the building. Neither the special permit nor the conditions were appealed. So, calling it a recreation room instead of a guesthouse seems to me an elegant way to get around the existing limitations on that special permit. I'm not sure that it's ineffective. I'm not sure that it's ineffective weighted to that. And I'd be more comfortable if I could hear some explanation of, let's pretend the applications for a guest house. How do you get around the restrictions in the original special permit?
Mr. Chitikai, may I respond?
Please.
We're not pretending anything. We have proposed a specific use that is not a guest house use. And this is the concern that the board has with respect to any use. There's always a possibility that the applicant changes the use illegally. And that's why the building commissioner has zoning enforcement powers. If we do not comply with the requirements of our authorization, if we need an authorization, that's a matter for enforcement and is not a valid reason for denying relief. With respect to the issue that, you know, the very specific guest house issue, I looked for any legal authority authorizing a zoning board of appeals to prohibit an allowed use. I could find no cases on this subject matter. I'm happy to defer to town council. I've never seen a zoning board of appeals prohibit an allowed use. I can't explain this anomaly. Perhaps if I was Mr. Boows Council in 1998, I might take issue with it. But again, it was a special permit for a boathouse. I presume he did not care about this restriction since that was not his intended use, and it's not our intended use. But we're not challenging, we're not challenging the 1998 special permit.
It was, it was a special permit for a structure to be used as a boathouse. The special permit goes with the structure, not necessarily the use of the structure. And I, I agree with you that I can't imagine where an authority would come from for a zoning board to prohibit an allowed use or condition an allowed use, but they did, and it wasn't appealed. And that, my understanding of race judicata means that that issue is closed. And I, I understand what you're trying to do here. I just am having a real hard time seeing the pathway around what I think is, was originally an unnecessarily created problem, but it's still a problem.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond, please?
Sure, please.
Thank you. I actually think you hit it on the head. You said that it was a special permit for a structure, a boathouse on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, in which case the zoning board's prohibition of an unrelated use is not germane to its decision. I agree with you. It was a special permit for a structure. I can speak to the doctrine of race judicata. I don't think we have the same issues here. We certainly don't have the same parties. We're now some 30 years later. I don't think the doctrine is applicable. Again, it was a special permit for a boathouse use, not a request, in our case, to convert that boathouse use to another allowed residential accessory use.
Can I ask one more question, Mr. Chairman? Do you, do you know of any authority that tells us that we can revisit conditions on a permit?
Oh, well, yes. That happens all the time. I've been involved in any number of instances where we've gone back and modified existing special permits as well as site plan review. And so I think that happens frequently. Again, I'll defer to town council. But I could list any, any number of examples and cases I'm currently working on where we've had occasion, years later, to go back and modify a special permit or site plan review to, to address a change in the project or the use of a project.
Including changing or removing conditions that were put on the original permit?
Yes.
I would feel very comfortable if you could provide some authority on that for me.
Sure, I can give you, legal, I can, I can tell you that I recently obtained modification of a special permit and site plan review in the town of Halifax for a multi-unit, multi-family development that was originally permitted in 2014 and 2015. And we went through that entire process. So I just recently did it. I'm happy to provide you with some legal authority for, for that.
I'd like to see that.
And that was done under the supervision of town council of the town of Halifax, which I believe is the same, same law firm that is representing the town.
Cindy, do you want to make a comment, or would you like to pass?
Like and happy to are two different things. I will comment on several things. I agree with Adam in this situation. It's not uncommon to have special permit conditions revisited, usually in the course of continuing with something within the four corners of the special permit that you want changed. It's either a minor modification or a major modification. If it's a major modification, it's a whole new B notice and a whole new hearing about changing a particular element of a permit condition. That is not at all uncommon. I dare say I've probably been on opposing sides with Adam on several of those over our careers. And I found myself, both in terms of representing municipalities and private clients, on both sides of that issue. That's not at all uncommon. I also would say that we can't know why that those conditions were imposed, but what we do know is that those conditions were imposed as a condition to allowing that structure to be built and used as a boathouse. To the extent that you don't want to rely on that special permit, the conditions in the special permit aren't relevant. Say, for example, a condition, the hours of operation, to eight to four for that boathouse. If you were no longer using the boathouse and were going to, let's say, build a guest house, you wouldn't expect a limitation on the use of that guest house to carry over when you're not relying on the permit that you needed special permission to be able to do what you wanted to do, and the board had the right to put conditions in. Whether that particular condition that is causing so much angst today was a valid condition at the time, no one challenged, and we can't know. But it's my opinion that that condition is applicable to the use of the property as a boathouse under that special permit until and unless there was a modification request to change that and continue with the boathouse use. If you are not relying on that special permit, it's my opinion that you are not limited to any of the conditions that were imposed to allow that particular not as-of-right use to go forward. That's my opinion.
So going back to Mr. Brodsky's original question, do they need to be here at all?
I, I raised that same question. I believe he was denied by the building inspector, if I'm correct. No, you just came out of an abundance of caution.
Yes.
I'm confused with those two. I apologize.
I've got a quick question for Adam. You, you speak about the fact that this is not a guest house, but another allowed use, a recreation room. I can find in our bylaws a definition of, of guest house, and also in the table of uses, the fact that it is allowed by right. I don't see recreation room defined or mentioned in the table of uses. Wouldn't you be better off dealing with a known, specific use that's defined and cited as, as an allowed use? I may have missed it. There may be a definition of recreation.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, I agree that there is no definition, but when you look at the table of use, it simply talks about accessory residential buildings, such as, and then it gives a list of examples. Troshets, boathouses, shelter, or stable. I suggested that the list of those uses there are not the exclusive. This are simply examples of accessory residential buildings.
But a guest house is also cited as an allowed use.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, I don't think, I don't think that's a dirty word. I don't, if you will. I think it's specifically defined and specifically cited as an allowed use. It's up to you. You can call it a recreation room, but I don't know why, why that gives you more credibility, if you will.
It, it may not, Mr. Chairman. We call it what it is, not something else.
Yeah, and they're not applying. I admit, they're not applying for this to be a guest house, but it could morph into a guest house rather easily.
And, and again, if that, that is the case, that is, that would be the subject of enforcement.
Yep.
So why not just apply for a special permit for a guest house?
May I respond?
Please, that was my point, I guess.
Because the client doesn't want a guest house. The client simply wants to use this existing building as a recreation room. I wish I had a more sophisticated answer to your question.
I'm kind of curious why the client wants to limit her flexibility, if you will, whereas if it's, it could be any one of those allowed uses in that table you cited. And we would be, according to your argument, obligated to approve those, if approval is at all necessary, which it may not be.
I would like to raise my hand.
Somebody say something?
I would like to.
I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking, Mr. Chairman. I don't either.
This is Laura Murphy. I don't know if I'm unmuted or not.
You are, but you're faint.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have a button to raise my hand.
Does Ms. Murphy need to be promoted to be a panelist?
Jen?
She is a panelist.
Thank you.
The raising her hand, the raising of the hand would be over to the bottom of the list of panelists. You might just not see it, so.
I don't, no, I don't have it on my screen. I apologize.
That's okay. So if the chairman wants to...
Yes.
May, sir? My client has a beach house in Marshfield, and that is where her guests stay when they come to visit. So she does not want this to be a guest house. I mean, perhaps if she sold the house someday, somebody would want it to be a guest house, but they'd have to maybe try to change that for the use. But she does have a guest house in Marshfield, and that's why we're not turning it into a guest house. We want to simply have it as a room where the kids can watch TV, and they can play pool, and if they want to go to the bathroom while they're there, they'll go to the bathroom. There'll be a kitchenette in there if they want to get snacks. And that's why we didn't apply for the guest house.
Okay, other comments? Are there people in the audience, Jen, who would like to be heard from?
And Sam Wakeman has raised his hand. I can promote him, or you can write in the Q and A, whatever you would prefer.
Promote him.
Okay. And I apologize. Turns out when you're a panelist, you don't have the raise your hand feature. So I just learned that this evening. Learn something new every day. All right, so I promoted Sam Wakeman. Sam, if you want to unmute yourself and ask your questions.
There you go. I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Loud and clear.
Okay, the, the original ruling of this building, regardless of what you call it, was that no plumbing be promoted into it. And the reason for that was a concern about this being turned into either a guest house or a residence. And without plumbing, that wouldn't happen. And that was perfectly acceptable to the owners at the time. I have to say right now.
Do you think the desire to convert the boathouse to a rec room, if the rec room has plumbing, would be consistent with that point of view? That it could further be converted into other uses that require plumbing?
Yes, that's our feeling, that it, by having plumbing, all of a sudden, the whole litany of uses gets opened up.
Adam, would you like to respond to that point of view?
Could I, could I say something? This is Nino DiNuno, the contractor?
Okay.
So Mr. Egan has already addressed that issue of his concern of that someday becoming a residence. When the lots were merged, that, that was no longer a possibility. So that, that fear of it becoming a residence is irrelevant.
Yeah, you can't have two single-family residences on the same lot.
Correct. So it could not become a residence. So that's not really a valid...
It would have a lesser use, an intermittent use, as with guest house or something else.
Yes.
Adam, do you have any comments? I'm not trying to...
No, sir, other than I don't believe the board has the power to prohibit an allowed use. And that's, you know, that's the fundamental problem with what the board did in 1998.
Yes, town council, Sandy?
I apologize if I should know the answer to this, but if my understanding is correct, the structure itself is non-conforming. Is that correct, Adam?
No, the structure is conforming, but the lot is non-conforming.
So if the lot is non-conforming, why wouldn't you just seek a Section 6 finding that this conversion to another use, which happens to be allowed, is no more non-conforming and no more detrimental?
That was one of our requests for alternate relief. The application was for a Section 6 finding or for a special permit. I didn't think that this request fell into either category easily, but we did request that relief as part of our application.
I, I think if the lot is still non-conforming, that's perhaps the easiest way to resolve the issue, in my mind.
Well, we do have Section 8.7A, is it, or one, anyway? 8.7, the very first condition, basically says if the only, the only non-conformity is the lot area, and the structure conforms in all other respects with area regulations, it's allowed by right. And we're talking about an existing non-conforming, single-to-residential building. So this was a conforming building, but I guess this was a, that's a modification or extension. So that may not be as relevant as your Section 6. Okay, other comments? Jen, anybody out there in cyberspace?
We do not have any hands raised.
Okay, board? Well, I'd make a motion to continue the hearing until October 6th, at which point we will most likely have a draft decision and finish our deliberations, or deliberate. Do I get a second?
I second. Lee Darst.
Okay. Good. Charlie?
Aye.
Charlie Higgins, aye. Woody Chitikai?
Edith Gertikai, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Okay, did we hear from everybody, I think? So Dave, did you chime in?
We need David and...
David seems, there he is.
He's muted.
David's muted.
There you go.
Dave McMorris, aye.
Okay. All right. Okay, so we will now move to a new hearing, which is 75 Pleasant Street, filed by Matthew Koser and Theodore Mara to put a second-story addition over an existing house's first-floor footprint. I'm going to re- I'm going to recuse myself and turn this particular hearing over to Peter Gertica.
Okay. Who is here to speak for the applicant?
So we're going to promote John Teriaki to panelists, and there are landowners here as well, then John can let us know. On the agenda, this did say 8:30, but it was advertised for 8 o'clock, so we have everyone here for this hearing. John, is there anyone else you'd like me to promote?
If either Teddy Mara or Matt Koser attending currently, you could, otherwise, maybe when they join.
All right.
Can I ask a question, John, before you start?
Sure.
On the application, under area regulations, number 8, page 2, your building height, you have required 25 feet, proposed 28.3.
Required should be 35, not 25. Is that what you were getting? Yes, that's a typo. I apologize. Should we wait till 8:30, or should we start?
You're okay. We advertise it earlier, and we advertise it for 8:00 p.m., so we're fine legally, and I know Woody's recused, and so Teddy's also been promoted. And I was going to mention the height thing, so that's great. I will mute myself.
Great, sounds good.
John, would you walk us through your thought process, please?
Sure. So John Teriaki, Teriaki Architectural Design, and Teddy Mara is here, the homeowner. And we are the architect for the project. And I'll just briefly go over the some of the material that we submitted, and then describe the project. It may be easiest if I share my screen as I'm speaking. I will go ahead and do that. So 75 Pleasant Street is currently a one-story house with a basement, partial basement as shown. And it's located on a narrow lot with some grade, as can be seen from the photographs. And the proposal is essentially is to add a second story over the house with a roof, and adding a small front vestibule piece. And the front vestibule is conforming, however, since portions of the existing house footprint are non-conforming, the additional one-story would be extending that non-conformity, which is why we applied for the Section 8.7B application. This screen shows the existing footprint of the house, the property lines, and then the required setbacks. The lot is 8,409 square feet. So it's non-conforming in size and non-conforming in width, which is 52.1 foot. And then both side setbacks, the house itself is non-conforming. Currently, 12.1 feet on the left side of the screen here, on the southwest side, and then 6 feet on the northeast side. These are just the elevations of the existing house, showing the non-conforming facade areas on each facade. And in my summary that I submitted, I did outline percentage increase on each facade, so I can briefly mention that again as we go into the proposed design. So here's a proposed footprint. As I mentioned, the small 6 by 10-foot, 68-square-foot vestibule, which is conforming. No change in the non-conforming footprint. The new second floor, which proposes three small bedrooms, and the attic level would be unfinished storage. And then the new elevations, and I'll just briefly go over the changes in the facade areas. The front facade, which is the bottom section of the page facing Pleasant Street, the existing non-conforming facade area was 183 square feet. Proposed is 258 square feet. The right side of the house, the northeast side, existing was 560, proposed is 810. So that's about a 44% increase.
Would you repeat those for me again?
Sure. So existing right side, non-conforming area was 560, and proposed is 810.
Okay.
And then on the opposite side, on the left side of the house, existing was 401, and proposed is 653. So that's about a 62% increase. And then the backside of the house, existing was 292 square feet of non-conforming facade area, and proposed is 412, about a 41% increase in non-conforming facade area.
John, all these are in your August 5th letter?
That's correct, yes. They're summarizing them there.
And they haven't changed at all?
They have not. And just to go back to the intent of the project is essentially to minimize horizontal sprawl on the property and achieve a very compact layout, stacking over the existing footprint in a way that we believe conforms with the character of the street. The total house in square footage is about 1,950 square feet, which in, I think, today's Cohasset standards is considered a small house. So, and the attic level, there are no dormers proposed. The intent is for storage. So this is essentially a modest two-story house that's proposed with the intent of stacking everything as much as possible and limiting expansion on the site, essentially. So that's why we believe this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and conforms with the standards of Section 8.7B.
Okay, John, the one thing you might not have discussed was the front foyer, if you will, which is an extension. I believe you said you thought it was conforming, however, and I just want to make sure that you tell us that and why.
That's correct. It's conforming in terms of setbacks. It's about 68 square feet. And that's what I meant. And in the letter, I also outlined that as the only exception in not changing the footprint. We have a very minor change, which is a conforming change in terms of zoning setbacks and height. It's a one-story piece. Here's a front view of it on page A2.1. And then here's a side view of it, showing the shed roof over the vestibule piece.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have a question for John at this time?
Yeah.
John, what's the ceiling height in the attic?
The ceiling height, let me just zoom in here. At the very center, right under the ridge, would be approximately 8 feet. That will be right under the ridge beam. That will be supporting that A-frame. And then it would obviously come down from that point to 0 on both sides.
So there's no potential for habitable space there?
No, because you would only have about, let's say, a 3- to 4-foot-wide section right under the ridge that's walkable. The rest of it is not walkable space. There's no headroom.
Thanks.
And there are no windows, except at the ends, no dormers?
Correct, no dormers. Just gable-end windows, mainly to bring some air into that space and for aesthetics.
Is that that chimney is a new chimney?
We are going to have to extend it vertically. It's the same chimney that's there, but obviously
Okay.
For building code reasons, it has to be a certain height above any available window and roof height, so it will have to be extended by a mason.
That's in your calculations, however?
It is, yes.
I suppose the sides of it, but you don't look at the sides, so...
The sides of it are not. That's a good catch, and I think the argument that I had there was that chimney encroachments are usually allowed up to 2 feet.
Yep.
And they don't count as part of the building envelope, which is why the sides weren't included in that.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Is our virtual audience interested in this one, Jen? Have we got people who would...
Yeah, we've had a few questions from Marty Corey. He's wondering right now, are there steps up to the third floor?
Yes, there are steps up mainly for ease of access. So as we extended our stairway from first to the second floor, we put a stacking walk-up stair to the attic from second to third, just to avoid having to deal with a drop-down ladder.
Mr. Corey has raised his hand. Peter, I don't know if you want to promote him.
I can't see him, but if he's raised his hand, and we can hook him in, that would be great.
Okay. I'm just going to allow him to talk. That'll be great. Mr. Corey, can you speak?
I hope so. Can...
There you are, yeah.
Thank you very much for recognizing me. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Marty Corey, and I am a resident on Pleasant Street at 81 Pleasant, which abuts 75, and this is my first opportunity to learn what my neighbors at 75 are thinking about doing to their house. And I was just wondering, how far is the house currently from the property line now on the uphill side? I'm directionally challenged, so I'm... Was that northern or southern, as you described it?
Yeah, we call it southwest. So the existing, the closest corner, the back corner, is 12.1 feet to that lot line, your side of the lot line.
And what will it be under the plan?
It will be the same, since there's no footprint change.
Okay.
So we're just extending it vertically, which is the relief we're asking for.
And what does it seem like at the beginning, there was an issue with regards to the height of the plans, a couple of numbers that...
Yeah, that was a typo, where we noted the town requirement has 25 feet for height, which is 35 feet.
And what is the height of the project?
The proposed will be 28.8, measured to the middle of the roof. And the existing house is 18.7 feet.
And the current house is 18.7?
That's correct, measured to the middle of its roof.
And from a process standpoint, have these building plans been approved by the building inspector?
No, usually that will be the second step. Right, I mean, that's usually the process. It would eventually require a building permit from the building department.
And as far as the zoning of Pleasant Street, what is it, single-family use? Is that what we're currently zoned for?
Yes, that's correct. There's no change in use.
But what, can we do Airbnb in Cohasset?
That, I don't know about. That's probably a question for the zoning board.
Do we have a policy on Airbnb?
Actually, I don't know the answer to that. Does any, do any of my confereers here?
We don't have a policy on Airbnb.
I don't think we have a policy, but we do allow it.
Yeah, there's no policy at this place. We're silent on that presently.
Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions, and my last ask is to have the board consider postponing a decision tonight so that I can retain counsel to review any property issues and building plans with regards to 75 Pleasant Street for the next meeting.
We won't end up making a decision tonight. It's not our policy, Mr. Corey. We will end up continuing the hearing. We may well draft a decision that would be reached at a deliberation the next hearing, which will be October 6th, I believe. But since we will not close it, you will be free to come back in if you have questions or comments or thoughts, and voice those at the continued hearing in October.
We do have a deadline for any additional written materials ahead of that meeting.
Yes.
When is that, David?
We would need it at least a week in advance.
We would want it the Tuesday before.
Okay, my only concern with your statement, Peter, it would seem to imply that you would write the decision regardless of any input that you would get from counsel with regards to this project.
No, not necessarily. We would write a draft, and the reason for the continuance as opposed to closing it now is so that more input can come in. We would not necessarily even proceed to deliberate if the material that came in raised enough questions that we wanted more information or a chance for the opposite viewpoint to be expressed. We may, we haven't asked for any further information from the applicant at the moment, because we haven't had any questions. It may be that your input would lead us to ask for more information from the applicant, too, so... And it may well be that the decision does not get rendered next week, or next month, rather, if there are other issues presented.
The only thing that I would...
You haven't presented us with any issues yet, but you may.
Thank you. And the only thing I would point out to the board is that 12.1-foot distance, the thing that holds up the property line is a stone wall, and there's a height difference of approximately 4 to 5 feet between 75 Pleasant and 81 Pleasant. There's a fire hydrant almost to the edge of my property, and I'm extremely concerned, because it's a field stone wall, that the construction process may disturb a wall that has been there for probably hundreds of years. Pleasant Street, as probably you all know, is a very steep hill. And as you come up Pleasant Street, 75 and 81 are on the same side of the street. And to be putting a second story on 75 within 12 feet of a field stone wall with building and equipment makes me very anxious, but I will be talking to counsel and hopefully getting a review of the project and taking a look at the plan. We're very happy to have young neighbors next door and excited to have them in the neighborhood, and wish them the best of luck, but hope we can get a chance to see what's proposed and just do that, see what's proposed and do what's best for our interest at 81 moving forward. Thank you very much.
We will certainly be happy to take into consideration any material you want to submit after you've been able to review a little more of what is planned.
Thank you so much.
Jen?
Yes, I also wanted to acknowledge that Mallory Lynn and Tucker Lynn submitted a letter of support on August 28th. They're also here raising their hand, but I was just going to read the letter into the... They're also here raising their hand, but I was just gonna read the letter into the record to say that this letter is to affirm support, the request made by Matthew Cozer and Theodore Mara to expand their home on 75 Pleasant Street through the request of a special permit. As adjacent neighbors to the east, we are invested in preserving the historical charm of our town and our street. We believe the proposed addition fits the context of the neighborhood and of the adjacent homes.
Thank you, Jen. For the record, would you tell us what their address is?
Yes, I will. It is 71 Pleasant Street.
Okay. Are there any other people who have virtually or electronically asked to be considered here?
I don't, I think that Mallory still has her hand raised, so I'll just, Mallory, you all said, or was reading the letter okay? Answer the record.
Me and Tucker are here just also to reaffirm our support. So thank you for reading the letter, but we also wanted the board to know that we fully support the addition and have really appreciated having them as neighbors thus far.
Great. Okay, thank you. Would anybody on the board, as a result of the last few comments, have any other questions for Mr. Chiriyaki?
Actually, I just had one. On the right-hand side of the property, standing from the road, I mean, with the proposed expansion, is there any drainage considerations that, that have to be considered, in your opinion?
You know, since there is minimal footprint change in the project, you know, the, the exception of the, the front vestibule, that's really the only additional footprint, which is about 68 square feet. And the threshold for stormwater review is 500. So since we are considerably under that, there's really no change effectively in the stormwater pattern because of this project, because it's, it's taken the same footprint essentially and extending it vertically. But obviously during construction, you know, the field stone wall or other perimeter issues, construction issues would need to be coordinated with the neighbors by the contractor. Those are all also governed by the building department as well. So those are issues that need to be discussed with the project contractor and the neighbors and the owners for construction activity and making sure that the effects on neighbors are minimized.
Okay, thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to continue this hearing?
Dave McMorris, so moved.
Is there a second?
Charles Higgins, second.
Okay, I guess we have to do a, a roll call here, Jen, so.
Yes, please.
Matt?
Matt Watkins, aye.
Charlie?
Charles Higgins, aye.
David?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Lee?
Lee Dyrus, aye.
Okay, and Peter Gerda, aye. So we are continuing.
Thank you. See you in October.
So Woody, are you back?
Yeah, some muted, Woody.
You're muted, Woody. You're muted, Woody.
There we go.
Right.
All right, I'm back. Okay, so we have one other continued hearing, which is the Harbor Project at 124 and 87 Elm Street. Jen, have we gotten any communication on that?
Yes, we, we were asked, I spoke to Attorney Brodsky today, and they were going to come before the board to open the hearing, but they were revising plan sets. And because things will most, most likely change with them before the planning board, it's continued actually at the end of this month. They decided just yesterday that they would continue it. So we received a letter, which I have filed with the clerk, so they were requesting that the board could continue it to October 6th in hopes that they could come in and open.
Yeah, I've been digging into this a bit, and I, I think that is absolutely the right way to, to go. I don't know in which way the plans will change, but I would bet you $1,000 they will change. And for us to deliver, you know, to meet here and then deliberate on a plan that's changing under our feet, doesn't make any sense to me. I'd rather the planning board finish its due diligence and see, see what falls out of that. I think there may be some zoning issues, but too soon to tell. So yeah, I would agree with, I would make a motion to accept the continuance. And I would urge the applicants to continue on with the planning board rather than try to have simultaneous hearings. I think it'll get confusing. Even though their jurisdiction is somewhat different than our own.
I would second that motion.
Okay.
Charles Higgins.
Moved and seconded? All in favor? What do you think, guy? Peter Gerda, aye.
Lee Dyrus, aye.
Got it?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Charles Higgins, aye.
All right, so that's been moved and continued to October 6th and most likely beyond, but we'll see. Okay, we have one, certainly at least, we have one deliberation, because everything else has been, I believe, continued when we get to it. But the deliberation is the Tedeschi project of a residential dock at 75 Border Street. Matt Watkins has drafted a decision. Matt, maybe you could take us through the key findings, plural, I guess, and ultimate decision, and then we can debate that.
Yeah, sure. So the, you know, the, the dock application was submitted, everything within the application, including the structural height does not exceed 20 feet. Total ground coverage does not exceed 200 feet. The, I think that the board had a couple of questions in regards to the length of the elevated pier. But we did discuss how that was something that was vetted, rightfully so, through the Conservation Commission. And the applicant had worked closely with them to, to make some mitigations, including limiting the, the width of that elevated, I'm just pulling up my decision here at the same time, the elevated walkway. So I thought from, you know, the dock approval standpoint, everything was in line with the criteria that, that we typically evaluate when, when looking at the, you know, the dock flow, the gangway itself. And the, the kind of initial reaction of the length of the whole pier, walkway, dock kind of put together that might have taken some of us back at the beginning, as discussed, was, was really a conservation issue. So I did draft a decision in favor of approving the dock permit.
As, as filed, all right.
Correct.
Right. How about other people would like to, you know, question Matt or make comments in this?
This is Peter, and I can't, you probably, I don't know if you can see me here when, when I have another file up, because I have the draft decision up. And I completely support Matt's conclusion. I did have a question with respect to sort of wording, and it's at the bottom of page, I think it's two. And it's the issue, or at least the discussion that Matt just alluded to a minute ago. The board did discuss the long length of the elevated walkway, but ultimately how that was something more within the purview. Would we maybe want to say, Matt, that, but ultimately believe that that was more within the purview of the Conservation Commission or whatever? Just make that a little more definitive in, in terms of how you reference that?
Yep. Yeah, I have that open now, so I can make that, I can take any edits here, including that, I think that's a good one. And send a revised version.
I'm not, I'm not wedded to any revision particularly of that, but I just think we might want to, you know, pin it a little more directly than the how that.
Yep.
That was my only question on the entire opinion.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just captured that, so. Thank you. David, did you find anything?
I'm, I'm yielding my God title to you.
You're a dock master?
I didn't have any, any questions.
I did too. I thought it was very well-written.
Yeah, and it was.
And clarified.
I would, I would dearly love, love it if we had the, effectively the authority to have maximum lengths or whatever for these things, but it's not, we don't, we don't have that.
Well, this, this, I think, was a very good sparse decision and had enough information, but it didn't go on as I tend to do, five or six or seven pages, so. Hats off, Matt.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it was accurate, Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I did put the, you know, I know that order of conditions, the first I did see it was today, so that's the only thing I put in and that was submitted as part of tonight's meeting, so unless it came ahead of that, I.
No, I had requested it, but I think it got lost in the shuffle since the last meeting, so, so I sent an email this morning when I was working from home, so.
Okay.
That we'd have it. I knew it had been approved, but I just didn't have it for you.
All right, good. Well, yeah, unless there's any other edits on here, Jen, I did capture that one, so if we, if we end up with a motion to approve it as edited, I will get the edited version to you.
Great.
Lee is gonna make that motion. I can, I sense, I sense you being just itchy about this.
I motion to approve the decision for 75 Border Street.
All right, I'll second it. What do you think, Eric? All in favor?
Charles Higgins, aye. Peter Gerda, aye.
What do you think, guy?
Dave McMorris, aye.
Matt Watkins, aye.
Did we get you, Lee, on this one?
I, I, the motion.
Oh, that's right. All right, yes, yes, okay. All right, so that's good. Now we have three continued hearings.
Chairman, may I interrupt you for one moment? I apologize, but Cindy is still here. Do, is, did you have any questions for Cindy? Or we can let her?
On any of the three continued hearings?
Or do I, if you need to, need her to stay on for the rest, or should she? What do you think, Cindy? If you're muted, let me in.
I, I think it's entirely up to you. I mean, I do think I have, I don't know that it's the right time for it, but I do have some comments I probably should submit through Jen about the Schwartz matter and how I think procedurally there might be pros and cons of going either way. If you were to affirm it, if you were to deny it, then it doesn't really matter. But I would assume you would want me to submit any comments before the next hearing through Jen?
Wait, so that, that can be incorporated in, you know, if the drafter wishes to, and if not, we can, you know, debate that.
Which application is that?
The 11 Sheldon?
Okay.
Road, the boathouse.
On that, I would appreciate any comments on the legal opinion that Richard Henderson gave us. That this is race judicata, and therefore we couldn't change the conditions.
Okay, Cindy, I'll send that to you. I, that just came in today, so I apologize that I didn't get it to you, but I will forward it.
So I would like to, and I will volunteer myself for one of the three decisions that are in front of us. But would people like to, a couple of people who haven't done a decision, obviously not Matt, volunteer for either of, or any of these three, and I'll, I'll take one.
I'll do, I'll do 75 Pleasant Street.
Okay, okay.
I can do Oak Street.
Okay, right, because you've done that before. Okay, got it. So it looks like I've got 11 Sheldon.
I did. Decision in some time, but the 75, the Sheldon Street, this race judicata matter, I need more information on before I could write a decision.
Okay.
I don't think it's ready for a decision yet.
May not be. It may not be for that. Sure. Yeah, and I think we ought to also give Adam Brodsky a chance to respond to that in some detail, Cindy, don't you think? That came out just today, right at noon time this afternoon. He's really, no one's had a chance to review this memo.
I, I, if I were in Adam's shoes, I would be requesting a chance to look at it and.
Sure.
And I did, I did make sure that I just, I got that today. I just, I spaced on sending it out to everybody.
No, it was great, it was great. I appreciate you sending it out, but it, obviously, you know, it has to be understood and, and appined on. And Charlie would, would like an opinion from town council as to where that may, may fall out. I think Adam certainly deserves a shot at agreeing or not agreeing with Richard, et cetera, so.
As a layperson here, I, I am mystified why they don't just apply for a special permit for a guesthouse.
Me too.
And then we wouldn't be limited, I don't think, by the, in theory, they could raise it and rebuild it with a new special permit. I don't know that we'd make them raise it, but, you know.
I don't get it either. I mean, the recreation room request, if there wasn't a kitchenette in there, I wouldn't be thinking about the guesthouse so much, but, but, you know, the whole thing is that this, on the race judicata thing, Cindy, it's a condition. It's not the permit itself.
If I could say, you know, I have my own initial gut reaction to the race judicata issues. I think there might be some wisdom to letting Adam reply, so that I have the benefit of having both of them, so I may not have to recreate the wheel on some of them. And, and like I said, I have some, I have some questions as to why there is even a special permit application versus just a section six, because no matter what they're doing, even if everything's completely 100% according to your laws, it's still an uncomplaining lot. So I, I'm sort of at a loss why, why this, other than I do believe it's one of those decisions that's a little strange, so in the scenario of better cover yourself and put all options out there, so your, the board doesn't decide to go one way and then you have to start over. I can understand why he put both in there. But I, I do struggle with why, what he's asking to do falls under the special permit.
Yeah, the thing that makes me a little uneasy is that a recreation room is nowhere referred to in either our definitions or in any of our use tables. It's a, it's a phrase, but I don't know what the hell it means, whereas a guesthouse is rather specific, and I don't think it's a, it would be a big problem for them to apply for a guesthouse and later on perhaps modify it, because it's a, it's a defined and, and accepted use in that district. Wait, 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 too many, sorry, Cindy first.
I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, and I quite frankly think if it was going to be limited to a rec room, that there would have to be some definition imposed on that, but.
We'd, we'd, we'd be inventing that definition, creating that.
Fine. I'm struggling with what, why they don't want to go with a guesthouse unless they somehow feel that there would be more opposition to that as being something that people might find more intensive than just a rec room. It, it's not my position to read his client's mind or his reasoning with his client, but I think your points are well-taken. And, you know, I, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask Adam those questions, and I, I don't, I, I can't imagine if I was representing a client in definitional. and definitionally it was going to be ultimately the same on allowed use. I do think you can, rec room would fit in accessory use. I think that's not a stretch. But I would find myself inclined to tell my client, or I'd advocate that you've got another allowed use that's more expansive, that what you want to do fits within any way. Go for it, but it's not my place to, to make that.
Yeah, but to turn down, to imagine the board or, or, or some court, a superior court, turning down a decision on an allowed use, that would certainly throw out the allowed use argument that why are we even, you know, discussing this in a way? I, I I would have done just what you're recommending, Cindy, and I sense the board probably is with you in that one. That pick a, pick a use that, that is allowed, that's expansive, and if we were so inclined to approve it, approve an allowed use as opposed to a made-up use or a term, a phrase.
I'm, I assume that the reason that they're not applying for a guesthouse is that guesthouse was specifically referred to in that condition in the original special permit. And they are worried about a race judicata argument.
Yeah.
If they're looking for something else, it's not specifically mentioned, it's also an allowed use, it kind of gets rid of that issue for them. And, you know, I don't think they really have that issue anyway, and I don't think we've been all that subtle about telling them what we think about. You know, sneaking in a guesthouse as a rec room, but I guess they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Well, if, 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 if our, our hands tied, in essence, by the original decision, if they come back and apply for a guesthouse, they get their new special permit, let's presume, then the condition that was placed on the previous building isn't part of this decision. The neighbors and others have a chance to come back and make any arguments they want to about why it wouldn't be a good idea to allow a guesthouse. But a guesthouse isn't allowed use, the lots have merged. They're not proposing building a new guesthouse somewhere in the setbacks or anything. I feel like that removes, and I could be missing something under that race judicata thing, but that removes any ambiguity going forward.
Yeah, I agree. Plus, I don't think a condition is race judicata.
I...
You know, people change conditions all the time. You come back and you say, things have changed. I want relief from this condition. It happens in all kinds of permits.
No, I, I still, my biggest, my biggest struggle is whether it's a guesthouse or this rec room. I, I, I'm struggling with why it's a special permit.
Right, I don't see why they're in front of us, really. It's an allowed use.
Abundance of caution.
Yeah, I know, but it's, the building's there.
But I do think they do have the non-conforming lot issue. So I think a section six, if they didn't raise it and you didn't act on it, might leave them vulnerable to a challenge. I don't know.
What does section six say, in a nutshell?
Non-conforming use of structure, and you want to deviate from what you have there, the board makes a finding that what you propose is no more detrimental than, and non-conformity is no more detrimental to the neighborhood around it.
But the building's there.
Difference between that and just getting a new special permit for the building as modified to make it suitable as a guesthouse.
I'd have to look into that a little more deeply, but I'm still struggling with why if it's a guesthouse, it's gotta be a special permit.
Yeah, I, I mean, what if they wanted to modify the building in some fashion by adding a window or something? Would that come before us? I kinda doubt it. I mean, if they changed the footprint, if, if, you know.
We didn't specify the windows the first time. We specified no plumbing.
Right, it is for the use of the property under that special permit, which they're not proposing to do. Yes, Jen?
So I just think we should just, no, no, I just think we should, what, is it okay if I speak? I just want to kind of like streamline the process, because I think what we need to do, because we're getting kind of off track here and, and kind of teetering towards deliberation, so I just think Adam came in out of abundance and caution, asked if you want to do a section six finding, or, and I know he was also in discussions, I believe, to modify the existing special permit, which is another option. That they could modify what's existing, and that would also allow the neighbors and things like that. And, correct if I'm wrong, Cindy, but in situat, the special, they don't really issue special permits. They mostly issue, the majority of what they issue is section six findings, as whether, instead of an 8.7 like we have, they do section six findings.
I've seen more section six findings if something's non-conforming.
Yep.
Just because it's
Just something.
Right under the statute, under 40A, that it's just more straightforward, and where it's, I mean, my own experience on the other side is when you have these strange lots where you're not really sure what the issue or problem is, and it's off in terms of size, and there's absolutely nothing you can do about it because it was created so long ago, you're really just, you're making your argument that it, it, it just isn't any more detrimental than what's already there, that you're not going to be making a situation less desirable or more problematic for people. And, and both of them serve the purpose of requiring a public hearing and getting public comment out before you. And so to that end, I think that's the more important thing, you know, whether it's...
So I think, I think in his application, he, he amended it to state that he is asking the board to find a section six finding, which means that this is already before you.
Right.
So this...
Oh, okay, I missed one.
So what I'm saying is that you already have all, this hearing is still open. It's, you could still make a finding under section six. Or you could say, after Cindy gives us different options, which, on what the board could do, you could say at the next hearing, you know what? We don't even need to be here. But I think that we need to determine, we need to allow, because I was hearing three different directions. We want Adam to, to respond to the letter we got today from attorney Henderson, which I think we should do, then get that back to Cindy so she can see it. Then do we look at, is it a section six finding, or do they file to amend their special permit? So I'm just trying to, trying to figure out what direction you want me to go back to Adam with, you know, and, and what direction, right now, there's a lot of, excuse me, options, so. But there are three options that I see.
I mean, maybe I, I'll reach out to Adam too and just have a conversation with him about his views on why one versus the other, and see if I can get any information on that. But I do think the first thing, and the thing that's probably most important, you're coming to a decision, is giving him a chance to respond to the raised judicata issues that were raised. Because I think that gets addressed regardless of what way you decide to go procedurally, if you are going to decide to go forward with what's requested, or if it's a reason to deny what's requested.
Peter?
Yes, just, the thing that continues to trouble me on this one is that the board met on a special permit before and, and issued a, a decision, and it was conditioned on some stuff that was very straightforward. Whether or not it should have been, it was. So for the new owner to just, you know, change the building in such a way as to directly contravene the decision that was rendered, however many years ago it was, just feels wrong. Maybe there's, it just feels wrong, whereas they certainly could come back and ask for us to issue a special permit that didn't include that. And I, then I don't see any reason why, we've heard no argument one way or the other, so I'm not prejudging anything, but if they then got a special permit for a guesthouse, I would think, then nobody would be at risk, and we would not have basically, you know, controverted the, the decision that was reached before.
I, I think we need to do a little more thinking about how we frame whatever decision it is, and maybe alternatives in the decision. But I, I think to go to your point about the condition that's troublesome to everyone, I don't think that there would be a problem if someone wanted to come in and modify an existing permit to remove a condition. But I think if you were going to do that, it would make sense. I want to modify my special permit that's allowing me to have a boathouse without electricity and without utilities and without a bathroom. I want to change it so I can have my boathouse and have electricity and a bathroom. That's the more traditional amendment of a special permit, where you're amending usually a condition. Sometimes it may be number of bedrooms, sometimes, it's usually a condition related to the original permit. This use, I mean, as I sit here, can I say it would be absolutely 100% wrong to try to do what they want to do via amendment of a special permit? But I, I see shifting the use to something that's allowed arguably is much different from amending an existing special permit and the conditions for using that permit. So I don't know if that helps or not. And we may all just continue to struggle with this, because it is something we can't explain and doesn't seem to make much sense now. But I don't think that the existence of that condition in that special permit has to necessarily prevent another use of the property.
I, I kind of agree with Peter. I, it just bothers me that they're back-dooring something. Just come in the front door. You know? What if we said, okay, you can have your rec room, but you can have a kitchenette? They're not gonna like that.
That's something you could do. That's a condition you could put on it.
What, what I'd also like to do is, is to avoid some inadvertent trap that would force us to conduct public hearings anytime somebody wanted to add a bed or add a shower or, or something of that sort to some structure or basic use. Because we've set the precedent that, well, if you're changing an element of the use or the type of use, you have to come to the board, even if it's allowed.
Well, the interesting thing is that this didn't go to the building inspector, which would be the way to avoid that. Someone goes to the building inspector and gets denied and it comes to you. Or it goes to the building inspector and that kind of, the building inspector views this as something that doesn't need to go to the ZDA and issues a permit. But that wasn't the path this took.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like 35 Oak was an appeal from a denial of building permit.
We'll have a few. This, this is an interesting one. We'll, more on this between now and October 6th, I'm sure, and then thereafter. I, I would want to just point out two things, that there are two properties, one of which will be before us, and one of which is not now before us, and I think could be resolved without coming to us, but the latter is 580 Jerusalem Road. I, I think there may be, and this is a relatively large house, that didn't get a large home review, that's not our issue. But there may be an issue of height. And so that may be, you know, appearing before us. I believe it is fixable, and it should be fixed, and they shouldn't have to come before us, but as, as far as I can tell now, if they stuck with their calculations and plans, they'd need a variance.
Woody, where's 580?
It's, it's across the street from, there was a two or three condo unit, the John and Juliana, I, I didn't sit on it, so I don't know the number.
Yep.
Somebody named Matthew.
That was a tear-down recently, right across.
Yeah, and this is a kind of across the street, a little relatively insignificant house.
Originally.
But, um, anyway, I think it can be resolved without coming to the zoning board, but my, that's my hope.
So can we just, sorry to go back, but are we done talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so what, so Cindy, so we should let Cindy go, I think, but...
Well, I thought we had finished. Okay, yeah, let's conclude that.
So what are we doing with that? Are we just gonna, I'll, I'll ask Adam to respond to attorney Henderson's letter. I'll make sure Cindy gets Henderson's letter, and then Cindy, you'll suggest a couple of different pathways of how we could handle the application. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, and, and as I say, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to maybe draft two decisions. Depending on where Cindy and it all come out for us to consider, rather than, because I don't think it's cut and dried at this point.
No, the only thing that I think may be cut and dry is if raised judicata comes out one way. But I'm 100% that you, that that would necessarily be the case, but I think if anything, that's probably the most cut and dry issue.
Okay. Well, if, if a decision is needed, I'll volunteer, but it sounds like it's more likely that we'll have a continued discussion on this. And with, with no information next month.
I just want to make sure that, I want to make sure what my, what my marching duties were.
Okay.
I'm sure it's going to be to eventually start hounding me for my...
Thank you, Cindy.
Alright. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good one.
Alright.
Sorry, Woody, so you were talking about 580 Jerusalem.
580, I mean, there's a possibility that that will come before us. I, I haven't seen any work on the Ryan Stasco stuff, so I guess this is an appeal and counter appeal, and goodness knows what it is. We'll let that unfold when we get your packet. The other issue that I think is gonna take a while is the Cohasset Harbor condo complex. They're before us for a 9.7 determination, but I think there are some serious parking problems they have that I can see three or four variances being required unless they modify their plans. Now, that's just my take. It doesn't mean that that's, that's the gospel, but I, I see big problems ahead of that one. And again, it's something they can prob, I hope they can fix it. But we'll see. That's just a heads up. The planning board will, will be dealing with this.
This is one of the things the planning board is reviewing, you think?
Yeah, it's, yes, they probably have, I don't know, Jen, 20 or 30 different issues, you know, that they're dealing with, some major, some minor, but yeah.
We've had two or, we've had two or three major hearings on it with a list of going through all the major aspects of the plans. We have a peer reviewer who has reviewed the plans, and then they'll take all of that information. And they're coming back with changes and proposals to addressing, and the last meeting was affordable housing and, and parking and the proposed underground parking garage.
Yeah, see, what they can do, the planning board can do a lot, but if it comes down to the fact that they don't have enough parking spaces, or the parking spaces are too small, or they're below the flood elevation, those require variances, and the planning board can't render opinions on those. They, they can't render a determination. Those are ours to decide. So I don't know yet whether they can be resolved in a back-and-forth meeting with the planning board and the applicant, or whether not, but right now, it looks like they're in a square circle.
Woody, with respect to parking below grade, which is, I, I'm gonna say common but expensive in shorefront developments of any size, and I could cite you any number in Boston. Those those decisions are zoning decisions because of our 9.7
Exactly.
Aspects, yeah. Aspects, yeah. So they need to make a case, I assume, that that underground park, it's the only way you can build this thing, so.
Sure, and they have to be able to demonstrate that it's.
It's expensive. It's expensive enough that they wouldn't be doing it if they didn't have to do it. They have to do it to make saleable units, that you know, you can't sell condos without parking.
Right.
You can rent some things without parking, but you can't sell it. So I suspect our nine point seven was not really ever drafted to 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 deal with this kind of a of a of a project. I mean, Rose Wharf, Boroughs Wharf, Battery Wharf, all of those projects in Boston, everything over at the Seaport and the new the new stuff, all of that has underground parking. And it's certainly within what would be flood.
Yeah, you know, it isn't that you can't do underground parking according to our bylaw, but it has to be safe and, you know, and not a hazard and so on and so forth. You know, items four and five, if they can demonstrate that, great. But it can't be just underground parking with the possibility that once a title surge hits, you know, the doors freeze or you're trapped in your car. I mean, you know, there are ways around it. Good engineers can figure this out, but right now that information is not crystal clear. I'm not saying that they can't do it. They just haven't demonstrated that yet.
They dress it at some, you know, pretty they did it from a mile high view and they're going to be getting more up to date and more engineering, but they they have had it some structural information that's going to Weston Sampson, which is our peer reviewer, and it'll certainly be discussed in much deeper detail at the next meeting, which I'm not, right now is scheduled for the twenty third of September. But I'm not certain if it will be that date, but I think that's our next planned date.
Yeah, so I think most of that is solvable. But but to to be to be solved as opposed to just taking the plans that exist today. I will also say that their parking spaces are almost universally undersized, which would require a variance. They'll have to change that. They don't, they don't comply with our zoning bylaws. And they have to. But that's a bridge we'll cross. I'm just giving you a heads up that this is another interesting pro, really interesting project with a dozen different you know, appendages to it.
It is. All right.
I hope they're successful.
So I want to apologize to you all for not having the minutes, but after I finish them at our last meeting, I I type on a iPad as I sit here taking notes of our meeting while we're doing the meeting. And I looked over and it had been deleted. All of my copious notes, so now I have to watch the the meeting and I went on vacation, so that's why. So I will get those done. And these are safe and I'm going to email them to myself as soon as we're done.
You think we're gonna buy that excuse, Jen?
I know. It sounded good when I was writing it out.
Yeah. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I'll be rewatching one of our meetings. But I will have it for you for our next, for the October sixth. And I'm gonna get you, send you everything what I have thus far for September twenty second.
Is the September twenty second hearing or hearings? I haven't seen the material. I don't even know what the issues are. Likely to be complicated and and extensive or?
I think I I don't think so. I think one's reaction to the, they're all, there's, they're all reactionary to one another. If I can, I don't know, I mean, they're all I'd have to go back and see, but one is about a building permit, but and then then they're, then they wanted a cease and desist and then they want, and it's and it's from a building permit that was issued for plenty of time. And there was also, it's from a permit that was issued by the sport in eighteen and the building permit was pulled in time. But it's about one little section of the project, so with the neighbors appealed that. And so Bob is working on it, but we just have to have, let everybody, I guess.
Yeah, okay. So it won't be all an all nighter.
No, I hope not. I'm hoping that they can, I was hoping they could sit down in a room, but I get they want to, you know, so it's been advertised, it's been noticed. People think we're crazy because they got three ads for the same property, but for three different reasons. What was it?
And so there are three separate neighbors who I mean, the last time we heard this was years ago, right?
Right, we've heard it a few times. We heard, I looked at all the files today, so we heard it for a garage, which was approved, I think, in fourteen. And then they came before you for an addition, which was withdrawn at some point. I think that was two thousand and six. And then in two thousand and seventeen, and then it approved in eighteen was an addition. So when they went to go do the addition on the house, they found out that the house was not salvageable. The house was completely like they had, they had to throw it in the dumpster, like they had to tear it all down, the whole house. So they built in the same, so they got a permit to write, to build the house in the same exact location. But with the addition as approved by the board. And then there's one bump out that the neighbors didn't like, so they appealed the permit, the permit, there was two permits. It's very, I'm gonna have Bob explain it to you. So there's, it's basically the same neighbor. So the neighbor, the Wyndham's appear appealed twice. They appealed the bump out, they have an issue with it on the addition. And then they also appealed that we didn't issue a cease and desist for building the rest of the house that was just replacing the existing house. And then Delisi, who represents Stasco, appealed Bob's decision to issue the bump out under, it's they're like, we'll explain it really well once you see all the applications. I'm just trying to go from memory and I just wrote the ads and all I, all I know is it was a lot of paper and it's a a lot of time, so that's why I appreciate you giving it its own night, because as you can tell, I can't describe it well. I think it's late too. It's been a long day, so.
Is this the neighbor who is next to them on the street? Or the neighbor who's further back and on Jerusalem?
It's the neighbor on the street, I believe. Not the, not, not up Linden. Not up behind.
Well, the dog days of summer are over and we're back into it.
Yes, we are.
Okay, well, I I would make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Woody, you're the guy, yeah.
You are, aye.
Peter Garret, aye. Charlie Higgins, aye.
Okay, and David?
David Morris, aye.
Great, okay.
Thank you all so much.
See you all in two weeks.
In two weeks.
Wonderful.